Good evening. So, Marcia, I'm ready to go. At this time, I'd like to call the Anacortes City Council meeting for July 20th, 2020, to order. Ms. Hunt, would you take the role?
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Here.
Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougal?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, the first item on our agenda tonight is under announcements and community reports, and it's the COVID-19 update. And the latest numbers I have for you are in Anacortes. To date, Island Hospital has tested 2,574 people. We've had positive cases of 42. We've had eight people hospitalized, and we've had no deaths in Anacortes. In Skagit County, we have 686 positive cases. We have 70 people have been hospitalized. We've had 16 deaths, and we have had 483 people recover. Those numbers right now equate to 95.2 per 100,000. So, we continue to trend in the wrong direction. To be able to move from Phase 2 to 3, we need to be 25 or less per 100,000. So, I know the Health Department's working really hard with the campaign to educate people in the valley, both in English and in Spanish. And today, everyone believes that the mask is our biggest tool for prevention of COVID spread. There's no other tool that we have right now that is more effective than the mask. So, we need to continue to tell that story. On Wednesday, I will be visiting the testing site at Skagit Valley College at 11:30 in the morning with all the other mayors in the county to thank the volunteers. These are volunteers that work Monday through Friday. They test between 300 and 600 people a day. So, we're gonna go over there, spend some time with them, thank them for their work. And at this time, in Washington State, as of today, we've had 47,743 cases. We've had 1,453 deaths. In the United States, we've had 3.76 million cases and 140,000 deaths. And globally, we've had 14.35 million cases with 604,000 deaths. So, that is my report on COVID for this evening. I will be doing a community update on Wednesday, a briefing on the latest, where we are with our phases, and what are our new information will be out. It changes daily. It's a very fluid and changing situation. So, we still have work to do. So, with that, I will turn it over for any questions? Yes?
Yes, Mayor Gear, this is Anthony. Just a question for you. The national news has been indicating that there's an age demographic change now in shift because of earlier thoughts that youth would not be infected, but part of the cases they're seeing on a national trend is people that are under 50 as well.
Yes.
Is that not correct?
That is correct. There have been the more mobile group, and they've been wearing the least amount of masks also. So, that's been the trend. You're absolutely correct. But whereas then... Yes, Mr. McDougal?
Oh, were you done responding to Mr. Young?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Please pass our thanks on to the testing folks at Skagit Valley College as well. And I was curious, do we have any data? Have we heard, like, are we experiencing long, any long backups or delays in getting test results? Or are test results getting back in a reasonably timely manner, at least in Skagit County?
From what I've heard, and I'll confirm this when I go over on Wednesday, but I've heard that it's usually in the 24 to 48 hours, and they text you the results. So, we have not had the same experiences maybe our more populated areas have had. We have a good system and a good lab in place.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else on COVID? All right, so at this time then, we'll move to Item 2, which is a Fiber Committee Report.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters?
Fiber Committee Meeting, Matt, and I don't think that we really have a lot to cover that won't be covered by the fiber presentation later tonight. I don't think we need to belabor that. But the committee did ask that the fiber department look for ways to increase the speed of installations, including by hiring more people if necessary to make that happen, limited-term employees, because if we can increase the speed of installation, we can start generating more revenue sooner and make the effort pay for itself more quickly. So, I definitely think that that is something that we emphasize and hope we can hear some more about that tonight.
You will, yeah. Anything else for fiber? All right, then, Item 2C is our Public Works Committee Report.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. We had a Public Works Committee meeting just prior to this meeting. Mr. Young, Mr. Walters, and myself, along with Public Works Director Fred Buckenmeyer, Nicole Tesh, and Eric Scharback. And we had some good news tonight on a variety of subjects, which was great. One of the things is referenced in our consent agenda. It's the contract modification for the March Point area cation repair. So, although it looks like, I mean, we are adding money, the request is to increase the amount of the contract, the reason we have, that money has already been budgeted for improvements. So, we do have a greatly reduced budget, but this was money left over from some other projects. So, the idea is to use it and to actually repair more than we had originally hoped to, and we are still completely within budget. So, if there are any questions about that, that helps answer my question. We had an update on the wastewater treatment plant outfall. Staff is working on the pre-design, and the current alignment plan is that the outfall will zigzag from T Avenue to the end of U Avenue and bypass Port property, which will simplify the whole process and the timeline, because if the city were to go onto Port property with this project, it would be very disruptive to the port's operation. So, because the city has a right-of-way at the end of U into the water, that will just simplify everything and make it more efficient and actually have the project proceed quite a bit more quickly. So, that was our good news there. The next step there is a meeting with the port, because they're doing a cleanup project at the old log yard at the end of U Avenue. So, just to see what the overlap would be and how to make it smooth for all parties involved. So, that's moving forward. We got an update on Genafuel, which is what we're looking at for wastewater treatment plant replacement of our incinerator that is aging and requires a lot of ongoing maintenance. There will hopefully be money available in the state revolving fund, and Nicole Tesh will follow up with Ecology. They might have funding to help us, because there's a lot of interest in this sort of thing to turn waste into crude. And Nicole will follow up on that. And we're thinking around 2024 is when that project will happen. So, we have some time between now and then to figure out where we can get money, maybe even some of the principal will be paid for. So, that's good news. And that also gives us time to explore the market for green crude oil, which is estimated that our city would produce about two to three barrels a day for sale. Next, we talked about the water treatment plant project in the Clearwell. They're currently installing pilings, and they're two-thirds done. And we're having help from the PUD. Brant Barnes is someone who's helped on other city water projects over the years. So, that's going very, very smoothly with talk of the new raw water pipeline being pulled underneath the river in October, hopefully. As for decommissioning the old water treatment plant, the process is going forward gradually with all the necessary permits that take time. The next step is creating a work plan to give to Ecology to weigh in on. So, that's ongoing. The search is on for our operations manager replacements, and that will be an internal search within the Public Works Department, and we have eight applications. So, that's gonna be tough, but I know we'll have a lot of good choices there. As for the Skagit PUD, we talked about the South Badogal Water System acquisition that we've been, staff's been working on over the past at least year, but that process is sort of on hold on the PUD side, because they are having trouble getting the public comment and meetings happening technically that they need to move forward with the process. So, that's on hold. We also got an ag-water update, and that is ongoing conversations between the PUD and the agricultural group. They are out of the Anacortes service area, so those conversations are happening with the PUD, the Swinomish Tribe, the farmers, and that hasn't really progressed yet. Just a couple of other things. We talked about our annual pavement maintenance and how, over the past years, we've increased from a 64 to a 68 PCI, which is the rating of our pavement, which doesn't sound like maybe a huge number, but it actually really is, especially because on paper, we need $3 to $4 million a year to do our pavement maintenance. But what we really have is $1.8 million in the budget, so quite a bit less, but we're getting a lot done with that budget. So, we've made really good strides with the resources that we have, and that's due to staff doing a really good job. And lastly, Anacortes has been recognized in some national magazines of public works. There's a municipal magazine, it's a national publication that goes to all the municipalities in North America, and Anacortes got tuto's for wet fiber projects and a bunch of other stuff that we've been doing. So, Nicole Tesh is going to send us links to that, so we can read more about how we've been recognized at that national level. And that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, very good. Any additions to that report? Okay, all right, then we'll move on to our consent agenda.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. Cleland?
Yeah, so, last Thursday, I was part of, I'm part of the Public Safety Committee, and we went to the police station, because we have two new officers that were sworn in on Thursday. And so, I just wanted to give them a warm welcome, Officer Norris and Officer Rhodes. They come with a lot of diverse experience and a passion for our community. So, normally, this happens at a city council meeting, and family can come. There couldn't be any family there. We were all masked up, and it was only police officers and staff. But I just wanted to give them a shout-out and say hello to them if you see them.
Thank you, Christine. Yeah, it was a really nice ceremony. One of the gentlemen, Stuart, he graduated top of the class of the whole academy. So, out of all the officers that came, we have the number-one officer for that whole Washington State class. So, it was an honor to swear both those gentlemen in there. Once again, the Police Department's done an excellent job of hiring the right candidates for our community. So, thank you for bringing it up, Ms. Cleland. At this time then, I will move on to our consent agenda, which is action items, Items 3A, B, and C. What is your pleasure?
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Miller?
Go ahead. Well, I move to approve Items A through C on the consent agenda.
Right.
Mayor Gear, before I second, I just wanted to mention that this sheet represents the first CDBG grants for a small business development in Anacortes, that we funded 16, and so we have nine here of our local businesses that will be helped greatly by those funds. So, that's one of the things that we're approving tonight, and I would like to second approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Now, we're on to Item 4, under our public hearings tonight. We, our first item is 4A. It's a closed-record decision hearing, the CUP 2019-0002 for Grandview Cemetery Expansion, a conditional use permit. This is a discussion with possible action, and I believe Tess Cooper will lead the discussion this evening. Welcome, Tess. How are you? We can't hear you. You have to unmute yourself. There you go.
There we go. Thank you. How are you?
Very good.
Good. Okay, so tonight, we will be talking about the conditional use permit 2019-0002 for the expansion of the Grandview Cemetery. And I'll share my screen with you, so we can go through a quick presentation. Okay. Can everybody see?
Yes.
Tonight, we have a closed-record decision hearing. I want to bring to your attention quickly, before we move into the majority of the discussion, that a transmittal of additional documents sent this evening, and Marcia has added it to the record for items that were, had errors or omissions. My remote location, I didn't have access to everything that was quite needed, so I fixed typos that were in the City Council findings of fact document, added the actual scanned signed copy of the Planning Commission's motion, included the most up-to-date version of the landscape plan, and included the large critical area report for your review. And there was very minor typos with the meeting time and some of the boxes checked and unchecked in the fact document. Those were the only changes that were made. So, the project information, the applicant tonight is Anacortes, and I see that John's here with us, so he can answer some questions if they arrive. End owner, of course, is the city of Anacortes. The proposed use for the vacant is a civic cemetery use. The zoning is a public use zone, and that zone are conditional use. The location is 411 Hill Crest Drive, Assessor's Parcel Numbers, P33177 and P33177. Prior meetings on this project include development replication meeting, a neighborhood meeting, Planning Commission site visit, and the Planning Board hearing. The details of the proposal. Our conditional use to expand the existing Grandview Cemetery, adding a 4.8 acre addition to the existing facility to include additional grave sites, access points, a future restroom, additional parking for attendees, these, and landscaping. Project occurred in August and February. The SEPA determination was issued February 7th. A few public comments were received. The primary topics of concern identify issues with the loss of trees and wildlife habitat. Those are attached to the packet as Exhibit D for your review. Staff, public comments in their review and their recommendation. In the vicinity of the project include one stream. It's in the vicinity of the property, but not in the vicinity of the project area. A question about the wording in SEPA documents. So, I put a quick diagram here for you. It says that more than, the stream, Happy Valley Stream, is more than 85 feet from, it says, the property corner, but what it really means is the project site corner, because here in the Grandview Cemetery property. The 85-feet distance is referring to the corner of the project site parcel. And there's approximately 205 stream within the cemetery property, which is this far corner here by the shots on the property, but not in the vicinity of the project site, as you can see. The public use zone is designated for allowing common public uses, and it's appropriately for any use, it's appropriately city. Under that zoning, as we said, conditional uses are listed as civic uses. And civic uses is where we find the cemetery, call it columbarium, columbarium. So, that's why we're in a conditional use approval hearing this evening. What about the project and the project site? You can see, this is a four-acre property that they are proposing to expand on to. The site plan shows most of the work here is new pavement and widening road, tree removal along the access road where the roots are touching the pavement. In the vacant area, removing all of... Yes?
How many trees are being removed? Because they're quite large.
They are quite large. I can pull up the number. John, do you know that number off the top of your head? How many of the poplars?
Good evening, everyone, Mayor, City Council. Yes, there's approximately 70 of the poplars that will be removed.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
Do I assume all of them?
Say that again?
Do I assume correctly that's all of them?
Yeah, John, is that all of the trees along there?
Yes, we will remove all of the poplars. We estimate there to be about 70 of them. That's correct.
Okay.
Mayor Gear?
Yes.
Are those... Thank you. I feel like I read somewhere that those are considered invasive. Is that true?
Well, they're not native. They have their use in agricultural areas, and they were planted here, obviously, many years ago as a windbreak and other things, but their roots are quite invasive, and that's what undermines the road, and their roots stretch quite out, quite a distance out, about 50 feet in either direction. So, it undermines the stability of some of the infrastructure, which we don't want in a cemetery.
Yeah. That route is really difficult to drive out at this point because of the roots.
It is, even to ride your bike on. It's pretty difficult. And do they act as a windbreak? Is that another reason they were put there? Do we know?
I don't know why they were put there, Ms. Moulton, ultimately. I think that's a common use of them, but I don't know why, what specific use they were after there. Maybe just a scenic break of some sort. I'm not sure.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
Yes, but would you agree, John, that the utility, you know, now, given the expansion of the cemetery, even if they were there for a windbreak, that their utility now is an impediment to expansion of the cemetery and the work that needs to be done?
Thank you, Mr. Young. Yes, that is absolutely correct. We can't do the road improvements and other improvements around those trees and leave them there and have them be safe and stable. They'll be undermined by their roots being dislodged, and so it would just, it would create a situation of hazard trees along the line.
Okay, any other questions about the trees? Okay, thank you, Tess. Go ahead.
Certainly. Additionally, there's vegetation removal, where there's blackberry and other shrub and vegetation growth. There will be a new stormwater conveyance all the way along the property line. You can see the second half here runs down here. There will be a new stormwater detention pond, a future restroom location. And the purpose of the expansion here, widening of the pavement, is to allow for additional parks. And there was a question, the width, the width here is, this area for parking is not added, the difference between the 16 and the 20-feet width of the entrance is to allow for turning radius. So, that's why it's only 16 there and 20 here.
Oh, okay.
And so, you can see the tree removal, the poplars, and the damage that it has done to the existing pavement, and the brush removal that will occur to allow for additional cemetery plots to be created. We repave the pavement here, and the widening pavement will be in, will be pervious pavement that will allow stormwater infiltration. The new stormwater conveyance will be along the property line with St. Mary's, and then there will be landscape screening installed along the property line as well.
Mayor Gear?
This is the area of the stormwater pond.
Excuse me, Mr. Walters?
Yep.
Could we describe the landscape screening along that fence line?
I have the landscape plan shown here and another few slides we can look at.
Okay.
This is the corner where the stormwater pond will go. You can see this area here. It will be bermed up to prevent overflow, and there will be additional landscape screening along the property line with a property line fence, as well as a chain-link protective fence at the top of the berm around the stormwater detention pond. And you can see this from the property line where the project was proposed. And we've requested that it moved to the left five feet, so that it goes this way and gives this property line and this homeowner a little more of a buffer. So, this will be the chain-link fence along this home's property line here.
Okay.
With a stormwater pond, another security fence, and then additional trees and screening and landscaping as you enter the road. And here's a compilation of the landscape plan. While the poplars were slated to be removed, they are going to be replaced with a different species of tree. The landscaping along the property lines, you can see, the fences, I can't point to this portion, sorry. And then there's for our tree preservation plan, the amount of trees being removed and the amount of tree... And then there's for our tree preservation plan, the amount of trees being removed and the amount of tree credits required to be replaced. There's an extensive amount of new trees that will be planted as wind rose to replace the trees that will be removed. We can pull up and look at the species a bit more detail as to that landscape screening that you are asking. Staff reviewed the project and made recommendations to planning commission to to recommend approval to City Council regarding the subject conditional use permit. Subject to staff's suggested conditions of approval as listed in the staff report. The planning commission conducted a pre-decision, open record hearing where public testimony deliberation on the matter was heard. The commission voted six and oh in favor of recommending approval to City Council. So if there's additional questions or concerns, discussion between myself, any of the packet documents, or questions for John, we can discuss those at this time.
Also, Tess, I'd like to mention if there's any parties of record, they can call in tonight at three six zero two nine three nineteen oh four. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
And Council, what's your questions? What are you thinking?
Mayor, Mayor Gere?
Mr. Miller.
So a couple of questions. I'm guessing Tess is probably the first one to try to answer them. I appreciate you mentioning why we're doing a conditional use permit. I think it's always important because it's a zone public and it requires a conditional use permit for cemetery, museum, school, some other public uses. I don't have the list memorized from Title Nineteen of our code. But the main issues seem to be around the buffers and the stormwater management. So I think, I think you've adequately addressed those. But I, I can't help asking the capacity question, only because we're, you know, we, we should be reminded. I think we may, I, I think John may have mentioned a year ago, six months ago, when we talked about it, what are we going to get for the expansion? I'm sure there's ways you can do this, you know, twenty fifty, twenty seventy-five, it's going to meet our city's needs for that period of time. Can you, can somebody answer that question or, or remind me of that, that answer?
Mr. Miller, thank you for the question. So you want to know how many grave plots we're going to get with the expansion? Is that your question?
Yes, and you know, that number might not be the right number. You know, it's kind of on my mind because Arlington National Cemetery, unfortunately, I've been reading too many, too many articles about that and that, that is becoming capacity limited, so either do it by time or by plots. And it depends if you do above ground, below ground. So I know there's, I, I, I just think it's important, since we're having a public discussion, that, that we should be reminded about what we're, what kind of capacity we can expect. And whether you do it by time or plots, it doesn't, it, it doesn't really matter.
Sure, so the, we think we're going to get about two thousand burial plots there, full burial size. So that, in our current system, that could have about, you could have probably about four thousand people there, the way they currently go, because some people are full burial in caskets, but that's been changing with cremated remains. And so if that's, if you went full burial, if you decided to, to put in smaller lots for folks, we might leave some green space for future ideas that could happen there, if people wanted to have above ground columbariums or there's other ideas that might happen in the next fifty to a hundred years. We have about, we figure about one hundred full burial plots left in the cemetery and about a hundred and twenty, what we call earned spots for cremated remains only in, in this, in Grand View. So we are
That seems pretty, yeah, that seems pretty limited, so thank you for that reminder. And then one more question. Did the planning commission put any additional conditions on it? I, I couldn't really tell by reading the conditions that are on there.
Question, they did not add any additional.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Gere?
Yes, Ms. Molton.
Thank you. So I had a look at the two thousand and six cemetery master plan. Mr. Lunsford kindly forwarded that to me when I asked questions about lot availability. And the two thousand and six master plan stated that there were five hundred lots available at that time. And it estimated that all of those full-size lots would be filled by twenty fifteen at the rate of seventy burials per year. But in twenty twenty, we still have a hundred lots available. Five years after it was estimated to be filled. So demand appears to be diminishing from what it was in two thousand and six. I just wanted to bring that up.
Sure, the, I think what we're seeing is a trend in, say, families are putting more than one person on a plot. So in the past, it was more full burial, a casket style. But now you're seeing people, more people going for the option of cremation. And so you're seeing, you can have, at Grand View, you can have one full burial and then two cremated remains on top, so three family members could be in one plot. So we're seeing more and more of that as people like to consolidate their family members and some maybe have more limited means and that's an affordable way of doing that for many families, so we make that option available. So I think that trend could continue, which is why, you know, we're looking at different options for Grand View. Will, will we hold some of it in reserve and not plot it out because things could change in the way that burial trends emerge in the future, in the next fifty years or more. So we're not certain how that would go. But we know in time, we will run out, even at the current rate.
So what other questions do we have for Tess? And I haven't, we haven't heard from the public, so.
We actually do have a caller who called in. If you'll give me a few seconds, I'll connect.
Oh, thank you, Matt.
Council, I have our citizen on the line. If you'd like to go ahead and introduce yourself.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Inga Christensen. I live at five zero one Hillcrest Drive. I'm probably the one resident in this area that's going to be affected the most by this.
Okay.
I saw some pictures earlier of my house and my vehicle and the proposed pond you plan to put next to my house. I have some questions. From what I understand, there's going to be a cyclone fence around the pond. Is that?
Is that correct, Tess? I can't hear you.
Yep. There will be
Go ahead. Tess is going to speak now. Hold on a moment. Yes, Tess? Go ahead.
A proposed cyclone security fence for the pond so that nobody or, nothing can get in, into the pond area. And then there's a screening privacy fence along the property line. So there, it will be double fenced along that property, that side property line with this neighbor. As well as vegetation, five screening.
Hey, Ms. Christensen. Can you say your question again? We couldn't quite hear you.
I'm sorry, it sounded like a gunshot just went off in my neighborhood.
Oh. Is everything okay?
I was wondering if that
So, Ms. Christensen, you're cutting out. We're not hearing you.
I know. Will that cyclone fence extend behind my property on the south end?
All right. Ms. Cooper, do you know?
There will be a privacy fence along that. I can, if you want to share my screen again, Matt, I can try to bring that. Oh, she can't see it, I don't think. Yeah, there, the cyclone, the cyclone fence. And John, you can correct the wrong.
Can you see a screen, Inger?
I can see nine people on the screen.
Okay, good. So can you see, she's putting up a, a map now. And she's going to explain where the fence is, the proposed to go. Okay, go ahead, Tess.
Certainly. There is a cyclone, metal cyclone fence that will be at the top of the berm of the pond here, and that's an exclusion security fence. Along the property line here with this residential zoning, our code requires both a privacy fence all, all the way along this property line, in this property line, as well as five-foot vegetative privacy screening or landscaping. So there will be both a privacy fence all the way along these two property lines. So yes, your question was, will it be back here as well?
Will that be a
Privacy fence, vegetation screen.
So is it a privacy fence along the back of her property, also just landscaping?
It's a privacy fence as well. It requires both a fence and landscaping.
What does a privacy fence entail? Is that a cyclone fence with slabs in it? Or is that made out of logs? Or what, what are we talking about?
Mr. Lunsford.
John, do you have plans? That will be at this time? We just require that it's a certain height and that it's not see-through.
Mr. Lunsford, do you know what type of fence we're going to do yet?
We haven't, Mayor, we haven't designed that fence yet.
Okay. But it cannot be see-through. So could you
Oh, I'm, I'm under, sorry.
No, you're fine. Go ahead.
So I'm to understand that you're taking out all the fir trees as well as the poplars.
Is that true, Ms. Cooper?
Let's pull up.
Because right now, next to my house, there's quite a mixed canopy. It's not just poplar trees.
Okay, okay. She's looking it up. Hold on a moment.
Is that only showing? There are a majority of the trees that are planned to be removed, but not in so we can see. These are the number of the trees here. And if we follow along, John, you can probably speak to how many of these will be removed, but we follow the table here to the numbers, should be removed, should be removed, will be removed.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. So yes, unfortunately, the trees in what we call the panhandle, the northern part, where the retention pond is going to go, will be removed. So those trees will be gone. We're, we're retraining some of the trees at the, at the south end because we have more room to maneuver around them and we can, can keep the root zones intact. But the construction of the stormwater ponds would take away all those trees there, unfortunately. So you're saying trees one through sixteen, they'll be removed.
Mayor, Mayor Gere?
Mr. Miller.
And just to, to, so John, can you enhance that answer? I also, there will be a berm and five feet of landscaping plus a privacy fence at that property line. Is that correct?
I, I think it's been increased to ten feet of landscaping there, Mr. Miller, between the property and, and there, yeah.
So yes, all the, all those trees are coming out. And then going back in will be a ten-foot landscape buffer, a berm and a privacy fence. Is that correct or no? That's what I'm reading out of the, the conditions.
You are correct.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Christensen, do you have further questions or comments?
Uh, yes. So will the public have access to the space between the privacy fence and the security fence? That ten-foot strip of land?
I can answer that. That's not our
And Ms. Cooper and then Mr. Lunsford.
It's going to be heavily vegetated. There will be trees that, if they're not retained, they will be replanted and it will be a very densely vegetated, so there shouldn't be much room for access. But what was your statement?
Mr. Lunsford?
I'm a little, I'm a little concerned because, as you probably know, people are squatting up there occasionally and there's a lot of drug use in this area.
Okay.
And it just sounds like it could possibly turn into a cozy little spot for people to hang out in.
Mayor Gere?
Also, the addition of, of restroom, a public restroom, you're giving them a clean injection site there.
How close is the restroom to that site, Tess?
This is the rest, the proposed restroom, the proposed future restroom.
I see.
Right here.
Mr. Lunsford, what concerns or thoughts do you have on this?
So I think that right now, we, we do have, we, the police work with us to respond occasionally to people squatting in the back and other issues. I think that they have a large area there, five acres of scrub and native plants and black I think that they have a large area there, five acres of, um, scrub and native plants and blackberries, and people go in there for, you know, perfectly reasonable reasons, to harvest blackberries and to walk and others use it for different reasons. Um, the restroom side is something that we would like to add, to have it available at services and for our staff. And so, that's something that we could keep locked, except when we're there. And, um, that would be the way we could run it. There's many ways to manage that, to avoid problems with it. Um, I don't think we would leave it open at night and when we're not there. And our hours of opening are from roughly seven-thirty or eight in the morning till four. So, if we weren't there or there wasn't a service, then we wouldn't have it open.
Ms. Christensen-
Well, I appreciate that. I also appreciate you putting in, uh, some buffer there between my house and, uh, the public pathway. I appreciate that.
Okay.
At, at the, at the first meeting I went to, I, I'm surprised there was a meeting on the eleventh, March eleventh, with the COVID thing going on. I would have been there. Um, I would like to know, uh, if that dog walking trail is still going to be put in.
John, can you answer that?
Sure. So, uh, we had proposed to put a walking path around the cemetery, because what you see now, animals are prohibited in the cemetery. But many people take the shortcut there at Whistle Lake Road, and they cut through the cemetery. And that's, for us, that's problematic in many ways, because that's a, a place we want to keep animals out of for obvious reasons. And so, but there's a safety concern around Whistle Lake Road for people who walk in that area. So, we had, at one time, we'd considered putting a walking path with, say, split rail fence on our boundary, um, there at the south and along St. Mary's, to get people out and fenced in so the animals couldn't wander into the cemetery, yet it would give people safe passage. And so, that is a concept that we have. I don't know if we'll be able to act on that, given some of the other requirements that we have there, um, but that was something we did consider at one time.
Oh, it's not planned at the moment.
I don't know if it's going to be feasible, given some of the, the birmingham and the store, and the swales that we have to put in there for conveyance of storms and storm water. So, I don't know if there's really room to do that path, as we once envisioned, and the other requirements that we have, and put in, and put in the cemetery. So, it just seems like it may be too crowded, but, uh, we'd have to honestly clear the site and look and see if there's room. We also have a high-pressure water line that comes from our, our, uh, water tanks in that area that comes right through that zone and along our boundary with St. Mary's. So, we've been asked to not put large trees in that zone, because we don't want any root infiltration or any damage there. We have to keep an area open for, uh, possible, you know, emergency repairs if that line was to break. So, we have to just, there's a few things there that we hadn't considered initially. So, we want to see how that all plays out before we can make our final plans for how, how the graves will be situated and where the landscaping will go and what the landscaping will look like with our stormwater conveyance. I mean, that's a very good question. I don't, I don't have a complete answer for you. I, I wish I did, but I don't at this time.
Fantastic. Okay, uh, that's about all of my questions for now. I would appreciate, though, keeping an open line of communication.
Okay.
And, and thank you for-
Yeah, um, you can call the Parks Department at any time and ask questions about the project as we move forward. And, John, if there's any changes, how would we communicate that?
We would try to, once we get into the phase and get all our plans, uh, set as far as what we need to work with, with Public Works and what the stormwater's going to look like, we'll, we'll just go knock on the door. We only have three neighbors there in St. Mary's, so-
Okay.
It's relatively easy capture for us to involve them in, you know, decision-making. Our project manager will be Nicole Johnston. Nicole's been on staff for twenty years, and so she would be in regular contact with folks and be their point of contact for the project.
Okay. So, we, we will do that, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Do you have any- You're welcome. Well, thank you for calling in tonight. We really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. So, at this time, Matt, is there anyone else that's waiting to talk to us?
Nope, that was our only caller.
Okay. So, council, discussion?
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Walters?
Um, a couple of questions and some other thoughts. First of all, I, I don't really like the idea of cutting all the mature trees along the west boundary, um, of the existing use areas at all. Um, but I also don't see an obvious alternative option. If we moved the road even, I don't see a real alternative. However, I just wanted to express the fact that I don't like it. Um, there is a note in the letter from Mr. Buckenmeyer on page seventy-two of the packet that we might wait up to seven years to perform the street improvements that Public Works is requiring as a condition of this development. And, um, I also don't like that, uh, because in my eight years on the city council, it seems like we've seen quite a few old developments where conditions like that get forgotten about and never implemented. I would think we would have a much shorter timetable than that for those street improvements. If they're required by the development, they should happen on a much more accelerated timetable. Does staff have any comments on that before I move on to my next point?
I can probably address that, Mr. Walters, if you'd like.
Okay.
So, that, uh, so, uh, the desire was from Public Works for us to complete the sidewalk instead of in front of the cemetery from, I believe, Stankas Place on Hillcrest Drive down to the west, to the corner, to allow for pedestrian access on the north side of the street, as opposed to the south side where the cemetery is. So, uh, we haven't budgeted for that. The engineering estimate was up to forty-five or fifty thousand dollars. So, we thought that we would need a little time to find the funds to do that, unless there are significant savings that we can't anticipate in this project. We didn't calculate that kind of improvement off-site as a part of this. So, uh, perhaps seven years is too long, as you say, and we can turn that around much sooner, or there's maybe some other project we can piggyback with, with Public Works on it. Um, but that was just to give us the legroom and discussions with Mr. Buckenmeyer how we may be able to do that. So, if we can push that forward a little bit more, we would love to, if there's savings due to, um, contractors', uh, uh, availability and other things we can take advantage of, we could make that, we could make that happen. But that wasn't initially budgeted in the scope of work.
Do we also end up with sidewalk on the north side of Hillcrest Drive from, uh, Stankas to V Avenue?
That's a good question. I'm not sure exactly where Public Works wanted us to terminate that. So, I'd have to look at the calculations with Mr. Lang and get you that answer.
So, because that, that part of the sidewalk would actually be in front of the cemetery, um, headed west from Stankas, because it's really not very close to the cemetery. Is that, is that what we're talking about?
Now, forgive me. So, this was, I was up to speed in March, and I'm not quite up to speed as I once was. But I believe we were heading west from Stankas in the discussion that we had with Public Works, not east.
Uh, I can address that a little bit. Because the right-of-way width and availability of area to make those, um, mandatory sidewalk frontage improvements along, um, that area, the edge of the cemetery itself is, is not feasible, because the, the road and the right-of-way is so narrow there, that because connectivity, um, that the idea of neighborhood connectivity and, and pedestrian usability, because of the internal roadways in the cemetery themselves, the sidewalk is not necessarily as important on the outside in that, um, narrow right-of-way. So, we considered the internal roadways as pedestrian, um, usability, but identified the whole length there of Hillcrest, of where there was sidewalk improvements and where there wasn't. And that Stankas west area, where there is already a trail and connectivity that goes to the west, um, that area is unimproved. So, yes, it's considerably west, not close to the cemetery, but it's within the whole regional pedestrian kind of, um, network, which is why that area was identified as feasible by Public Works for a good place to, um, to relocate the, the efforts.
So, did I hear you correctly that we just can't put sidewalk on the north side of Hillcrest, uh, north of the cemetery?
Correct.
Run out of right-of-way?
Not north, north of the cemetery, but north of Hillcrest, correct?
North of Hillcrest, yeah. There's not, there's insufficient right-of-way there?
There, there is no, the, the grave plots go right up to the very edge, for one. So, there's no room to excavate back and, and widen that, the area, correct? There's, there's no feasibility there.
Um, okay. So, sorry, to clarify again, that would be on the south side of Hillcrest, where the cemetery is.
Okay.
But on the north side of Hillcrest, there is sidewalk west of the cemetery, but nothing east of the, east of, um, the west property boundary. So, Hillcrest travels in front of the cemetery, and you're telling me that the graves come up too close to the northern boundary of the cemetery to add sidewalk on the cemetery property? And do I understand you that there is also not enough right-of-way to add sidewalk on the other side of the street? Which is the north-
Okay, I, you're right. I, I get what you're saying now. That was my understanding from Steve Lang, but again, uh, as John said, we can verify what the Public Works reasoning was.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, well, just quickly looking at the IMAP, it, it does look like maybe we've run out of right-of-way there. But that does seem to me to be, you know, pretty unfortunate, because then there's no sidewalk on either side of the street as you walk down to the cemetery. And you can't walk through the cemetery, because you've got vegetation. And, uh, all the residents on the other side have lots of vegetation, so you're pretty much just walking in the street. Um, and I guess it will be helpful to add the sidewalk that Public Works has suggested, but not really in relation to this project, because it's, it's not really nearby. If that's going to be a condition, though, I, I, I don't support having there be a seven-year timeframe. I, I would think a, a three-year timeframe or two years from completion of this project, or something like that. I just think seven years is too long. Um, there was a public comment about a rat problem at the cemetery, and, um, I don't know if that's accurate or not. But are we still using the property adjacent to the cemetery area for, uh, Parks Department composting?
John, can you answer that?
So, back by the shop, yes, Mr. Walters, back by the shop, we compost grass and leaves and woody debris there. That is correct. And we use that in our park system throughout.
Yeah, I have long advocated that we find some other place in our three thousand acres of forest land or somewhere to do composting. I don't think it is a very appropriate smell at the cemetery. And I, I, I'm not alleging that it is contributing to a rat problem, but some public commenter did, and that would seem to be congruent. I, I don't like it. I, I would like that to stop. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this project?
Mayor Geer?
Ms. Walton?
I would support a shorter timeline for the improvements, um, maybe even three and a half years or four years, but seven does seem like quite a ways out there. Um, and sort of piggybacking on Mr. Walters, I think at some point, again, not with this project, it would be really great to look at that whole corner road that goes from Hillcrest to Whistle Lake. It's narrow, there's not a lot of visibility, people coming around it pretty fast. And it's great to walk internally through the cemetery, but it would be nice if someday that could be improved for all of the users safely. Um, and as an aside, I, I went by the comp, I went by the compost today, that area, um, and it, it didn't smell at all. It was very tidy. I don't know, I can't attest to it being that way year-round, um, but nothing seemed unduly, um, unsanitary about it today.
Yeah. So, the one comment I would have, Ms. Walton, on the, um, where Whistle Lake Road runs into Hillcrest there, and there's that corner, there are graves right up to the edge. When I first became mayor, um, we had to put a, a retaining wall there, because we were afraid something might happen. So, that is, it would be an architectural seat to, to get a, I don't know where the extra space for pedestrians would go, is what I'm saying. Maybe a bridge? I don't know. So, it's really tight. So. Mr. Miller?
Ma- Mayor Geer?
Yes.
Well, since, since you did bring that, that part up back to Mr. Walters' point, he was talking about the north side of Hillcrest and then, of course, the west, uh, I'm sorry, the east side of Whistle Lake for the, for a possible sidewalk. That's something that we should, should be looking into. Obviously, we all know that'll be really expensive. You know, but, but I think we have, I think there is, there.
There's room. Okay, perfect. Okay, more thoughts? Would we like to think on this for a week or so? Do we want to, what do we want to do?
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Walters?
Um, I would move approval of the conditional use permit with the conditions, uh, proposed in the packet, uh, plus a constraint that the sidewalk improvements be constructed within, um, within two years of completion of construction. And that no composting be allowed on the site.
I'd second that.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Dunwall, to approve the, uh, conditional use permit with the conditions that are in this packet, with the addition of the sidewalks being improved within two years, uh, the construction being completed, and that the compost be removed from the cemetery. Is that correct? Okay. Ms. Hunt, would you take a vote?
Mayor Geer?
Yes. Ms. Walton?
Just for clarification, Mr. Walters, you might understand that everything that's already there needs to be removed to another site, as yet to be determined? Or do we, or would we see a composting operation from now, hence, from now forward?
Or my- Go ahead.
My proposal is that a condition of approval be that we not compost on the site.
Right, but that doesn't answer my question. Does that mean we have to remove every trace of past and composting? Does everything have to go away from there? Are we going to just stop composting now? Because the compost has happened already, so I just want to be clear.
I might not follow that. I think that is sort of up to the department to implement, but the, um, I mean, compost eventually goes away.
I like the term eventually. Yeah, okay.
Mayor, Mayor Geer? Compost operation?
Mr. Miller?
I, I, you know, obviously, we've got a motion and a second, uh, but I would think, maybe you should, maybe we should tie it to the, the two-year number, uh, seems, seems more logical. But composting operations should com, that would be my suggestion, if you want to amend your, your motion, or, or not amend your motion, but a suggestion would be that composting operations end, uh, within two years of construction. So, it's the same timeline as the sidewalks.
Mr. Walters?
I know it's not suited enough for you.
Mr. Walters, what's your pleasure?
Uh, I think you could ask unanimous consent to amend the motion that way. Doesn't sound like anyone objects to that amendment.
Okay. So, do your amendment or Matt's amendment, do you, okay. So, we're unanimous consent on that, all right. So, we have a motion and a second, and we had a unanimous, um, consent on the composting being aligned with the two-year sidewalk, um, being completed, um, after construction. All right, Ms. Hunt, would you re, restate that motion and then ask for a vote, please?
Yes, at this point, can you all hear me?
Yeah, barely, if you could speak up a little bit.
Okay, we're voting on a motion to approve the CUP as proposed in the packet with the conditions that are proposed, and the addition of a condition that the sidewalk improvements must be constructed within two years of completion of construction, presumably of the, uh, project under the conditional use permit, and that all composting operations at the entire cemetery will end within two years of completion of construction. Does that match all of your understanding?
Seeing a lot ahead and on, yes.
Okay, we'll take a vote then. Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Molton?
No.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you, thank you, Tess. So, the next item this evening under public hearing...
Welcome.
Excuse me? So, the next item this evening under public hearings, item 4B, is a public hearing. So, I remind the public, they may call in to 360-293-1904, and it's regarding ordinance 3065, amending the 2019-2024 Capital Facilities Plan. This is for discussion and possible action this evening. Mr. Hoagland, would you leave the conversation?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I put a few slides together that, um, uh, I'd like to go through real briefly. Sorry, I'm being, I'm a little, I'm a little challenged in sharing.
Okay, we can see it now.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, the Capital Facilities Plan, that's a component of the comprehensive plan required to be updated at least every two years, uh, the six-year financing plan for capital projects. Uh, the CFP can be amended when the city budget is amended. Uh, the RCW that outlines that states that, uh, the CFP and budget can be amended concurrently. Uh, so that's why, uh, after, the first item after the CFP amendment is a budget amendment, it contains the same budget items, uh, and the CFP needs to be consistent with the city budget. So, this, um, budget that we have, this budget amendment, we have the CFP amendment includes changes in 2020 and 2021, and our biennial budget amendment, of course, uh, we're in the second year of the biennial budget, so there will, there will only be changed in the 2020 budget. So, the summary of that is, uh, just two, two projects. The transportation section of the CFP, we're adding a 16th Street extension from C Avenue to D Avenue. This is a joint project that the city is going to work with the Samish Indian Nation. The, uh, the Samish have grant funds lined up that they can use for that project, but in order to qualify for the use of those grant funds, that project must be included in the city's long-term planning. So, including that project in the CFP will satisfy that requirement. The second item we're adding is in the wastewater department. It spans both years 2020 and 2021. It's a project that council is familiar with, it's the wastewater outfall project. Uh, we're adding $1 million for design in 2020, $20 million, uh, in 2021 for the construction of the project. This is the transportation worksheet that goes with the CFP. Um, I highlighted in orange the new project, the 16th Street extension. In the funding sources, I've identified contributions as, um, the source that will fund that project. And in the wastewater section, 2020, here's the additional $1 million that we've added. Um, I compensated for that in the resources under the rates and user fees, added a million dollars to this, bringing it to $3,466. In 2021, we added the $20 million with anticipating issuing a bond next year to support that project. And then the final, uh, page is just the summary of all of the departments, and, uh, through all six years of the plan totaling $154.7 million in that, in that plan. Um, our ordinance that amends the CFP is ordinance number 3065. Uh, we actually identified this several months ago. It was on, um, on the agenda, um, right before the COVID crisis set in, so we've been, uh, sitting on this for a few months now. Uh, but ordinance 3065, amends the CFP, and then, uh, concurrently, ordinance 3066 is the next item on the agenda under new business, and that's adding those two projects in the year 2020 to the 2020, the 2020 budget, a total of $1.45 million in that budget year 2020. Uh, so that's the, um, uh, so that's the extent of it. Our, uh, municipal code requires that we advertise the public hearing for two weeks and hold a public hearing, uh, which we've done during those, that we've noticed period. We have not received, uh, any comments. And now we are at the public hearing tonight.
Is, um, Matt, do we have anyone waiting to talk to us?
That is a no matter bear.
All right, thank you. And Council, what's your?
Mayor Geer? Yep. Uh, the other Matt, um, my general, my general rule on any CFP, uh, updates is, is to approve them, uh, because if they're not on paper, it does, it doesn't work out. And, but the other rule is it doesn't necessarily mean we fund them, but in this case, we're gonna be talking about 3066 in a couple of, couple of seconds here. So, you know, uh, uh, when, when in doubt, uh, get it in your capital facilities plan so you can at least plan for it, so I certainly support that one. Um, but, uh, the, one quick question first, for Mr. Hoagland. Did we ha- I thought we had the outfall somewhere in our CFP, or did we have some sort of, um, wastewater treatment, future money? Um, did we not have anything on the outfall in the CFP that you just moved forward?
So, that, that was, um, I'm sorry, I, I, I think we had something in, it may have been in the stormwater plan. We, we had been anticipating the, um, you know, the overflow issue for some time, um, but as far as, um, putting that into this, the sewer treatment plant, or into the sewer section of the, the CFP, I believe this is the first, the first time that it's been in the sewer plan. It may have been...
So, maybe that's the, it was in our stormwater CFP, and now we're moving it to, to sewer? Is that, is that accurate?
That's, that's my recollection off the cuff.
That, that is also my recollection. I, I just bring it up because it's important to know that when we put a CFP together, we're, we're trying to make our best guess of what we're, what we're going to spend money on in the next, uh, s- few years. That's all I have.
Mr. Walters?
Uh, I just wanted to tag on to what Mr. Miller said. I think it's very useful to put projects in the CFP even if we don't have a funding source, um, for them, but not within the next six years. Within the next six years, we're required to identify the funding source. So, uh, I'm glad, you know, these projects have those funding sources identified.
Okay. Other comments? You still have no one, no one's called in, no public?
That is correct.
All right, so, are we comfortable at this point? Anything else we wanna talk about before I close the public hearing? All right, so at this time, I will close the public hearing, uh, on ordinance 3065.
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Young?
I move to adopt ordinance 3065 amending the 2019 to 2024 CFP.
Thank you. Mayor Geer? Ms. Mol- Ms. Cleveland?
I was just gonna second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Cleveland McGrath. Is there any other comments? So, a motion and a second to approve ordinance 3065 amending the 2019-2024 CFP. Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Molton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. All right, at this time, we'll move on to item five under other business. Uh, 5A is also for public comment, and it's ordinance 3066, amending the 2019-2020 biennial budget. This is a discussion with possible action. Mr. Hoagland?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, this is the second part of that concurrent action with the CFP. Uh, the only items being added into the budget, or the only items being amended in the budget are those two items in the 2020 CFP, the $450,000 for the 16th Street extension and the $1 million for, designed for the, uh, sewer outfall project. Uh, happy to answer any questions that you might have about, uh, either those projects or funding sources, any questions you may have.
No questions. Mr. Kaufman, is there any member of the public that would like to talk to us?
No, there is currently no one on the line.
All right, thank you. What is your pleasure, Council? Mr. McDougal?
I move to approve ordinance 3066 amending the 2019-2020, um, biennial budget.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. McDougal, a second by Ms. Molton to approve ordinance 3066, amending the 2019-2020 biennial budget. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote, please?
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Molton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, we'll now move on to item 5B, which is access Anacoris fiber internet update. Ms. Chu?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Make sure we can see my, my screen, will? And, uh, please to provide an update on access Anas- Anacoris fiber internet. Um, Mr. Lindberg is also on the line, if you have any questions for him as well. Sort of a standard template that we'll, we'll go through here. Then, um, it's just a...
Yes, Mr. Walters?
Sorry to interrupt, could we go ahead and go full screen on the presentation?
I'm trying to, to do that, I'm a little bit issue.
Sorry, slide, slideshow tab.
There we go, um. So, you...
I'm sorry, I should not have suggested that, that made things worse. Worked for test.
Let me, let me try one, once, and more, I'm sol- sorry, my, uh, computer actually is having some problems tonight.
I think the, I think the display is, is mirroring both, uh, what you're showing us and what, what you're seeing. Oh, there you go, you got it.
All looks great, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, so, just, uh, we like to show you this information from a month-to-month basis on our G-PON customers, both the account and the, the revenue. Um, you will notice that in, in July, we have 246 customers, um, in, in service. Um, we have 15 that have requested static IP addresses. That brings in a monthly revenue of $16,074. We'll go into more detail on what is the, the makeup of those, those orders. So, we're getting so close in both the commercial business district and Old Town of meeting our take rate of, of 35%. What that means is that there's still customers out there that we would like to, to capture their, their business, and we intend to, to go out to, to reach out and get them as well. Um, as you look across the, this is the work that we have, uh, in the 2020 for the CBD, Old Town M Avenue, and then the two different, um, aerial sections, aerial, area two, three, four, and six, and then aerial area one and five. So, the, the numbers are coming up in terms of the, the take rate there as well. Um, as you look down at the, the revenue, you can see the, the breakdown between the, the residential and commercial customers. Um, on average, it's about $55 a month, um, is a, a standard residential bill, um, looking at these folks. So, again, going over our expansion areas in, in 2020, I know that you haven't seen this. Um, the, the additional six areas that we'll be, uh, working on will pass 1,296 customers. And so, if we are shooting towards the minimum of a 35% take rate, we expect an additional 450 customers. Uh, to date, we're running at about 12.3% as a blended average for those two. We have a total of 160 orders, um, out of the 1,296 potential customers. So, that design work has been completed. We, um, are expecting some changes, um, as we're making a couple adjustments within, within the design. Uh, the materials have been ordered, and the majority of them are received, and we are under contract with Robinson Brothers Construction. Uh, we expect that they will be able to begin work in late July. We do have customers that are not on the G-PON network, um, that we're working towards bringing into service, the Samish Indian Nation. Um, we have four different sites that we're working with them on. The order process is complete, the design is currently being worked on, um, actually this week, and the outside plant contracts are being prepared. The costs for these ad hoc projects are going to be reimbursed by a grant that the Samish Indian Nation have received, and that requires that the work be completed by the end of 2020. and that requires that the work be completed by the end of twenty twenty. We also have finalized a dark fiber lease with Island Hospital for three different connections, and that, that contract is being prepared to, to complete that work. It will include a thirty-one month initial lease term. And we are in the final processes with a K twenty contract that we have in order placed through NOAANet for point-to-point ethernet service circuit. This is a three-year contract, and that service will begin next month. In thinking ahead for budget preparations in, in twenty twenty-one, we've been spending a lot of time forecasting both revenue and projected construction costs, meeting with the mayor, the fiber committee, and finance director, and exploring different options. We're looking at grants. We have a meeting this week to look at HUD Section one oh eight loan, and looking at different ideas for, for funding, perhaps a, a line of credit. What we're looking at in terms of network expansion is that we've spent time looking at soil surveys throughout the city. And the proposed expansion area will likely include these remaining premises from A Avenue and east to the city limits. So these are the areas that we're looking for the, the next round of expansion through the city. And we're pleasantly surprised just in terms of, in reviewing the soil surveys, that while the, the majority of installations will be underground with some aerial backbone, that we think that we'll be able to, to do that without a lot of, just bedrock that we would need to go through. So our staff are currently exploring different construction methods as we transition from primarily aerial installations into underground installations. One of the things that was talked about earlier, and I appreciate that we've been talking with the fiber committee, the council committee, is specifically addressing the rate of insulation. And we understand that we need to find some ways to increase the rate of our insulation. It's directly driven by the number of installers that we have available. And so if there is a desire to achieve some higher rates of insulation, additional staff may be necessary. So right now, we've been spending some time just identifying the pros and cons versus of contracting for those services versus doing direct hire, limited-term assignments. Want to talk a little bit about the outreach that we've been doing? We do have a campaign to, to reach customers in the aerial expansion areas, and then also in our current pilot areas. And we have over five hundred potential customers where that infrastructure is already in place that we would love to be able to, to bring online and into service right away. You might ask how we're doing that, and we'll, we'll get to that through the Anacortes American, the utility billing, and the sanitation vehicle billboards. And if we, if you look on Go Anacortes, we have an online addition. We have a banner. And when you click on that link, it brings you directly to the city's website and the order page for access. We also are working with the utility billing advertising where this is similar to what we did when we were doing the initial outreach survey to indicate whether or not there is an interest in move forward with a survey or for broadband in Anacortes. So we've said that Anacortes has asked for a local dependable internet service, and we've, we've listened. On the backside, we can just have our fast, reliable yours and our access logo. We also thought it was important to include the, the City of Anacortes logo. And I know that the writing is small, but it says, "A community-owned fiber internet network built just for you. No gimmicks or hidden fees, just fast, reliable service and affordable price. Join your neighbors and sign up today at fiber dot cityofanacortes dot org." So we're trying to make that connection that people understand that this is a, a city service and that they have direct access to what is, how we run and operate the, the business because it is city-owned. And then just last week, the city sanitation vehicles began promoting access, again utilizing the, the city logo and trying to make that connection so that there's no confusion about what is city fiber and what we're, we're providing to City of Anacortes residents. I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that you may have.
Mr. McDougal.
Go ahead, Mr. Young. You, uh.
I'm Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. Ms. Chu, would you elaborate just a little bit on how installations are going in lieu of COVID? Remember that that was a part of the dilemma people had, whether working on the inside or working on the outside. How have that been addressed and how's that progressing?
The, the, the city's team is following the thirty construction requirements for the construction world in order to be able to do installations. So we have a, a series of things that we're doing to keep our employees safe and to, to keep customers safe. We still continue to offer no-contact installations if the customer prefers that. But most people are happy to have us come into their, their home. We do follow good protocol in terms of safety equipment and then how we go about cleaning and providing a, a safe buffer between the employees and anybody that's in the, in the home.
Thank you.
That, that have overcome that issue.
Thank you.
Mr. McDougal?
Thank you. Ms. Chu, a quick question. The, the signup numbers are actually, you know, considering this is a, a new service, signup numbers are quite good. Do we have any survey or anecdotal data from, from potential customers that we may have interacted with who have not signed up and their reasons maybe for not signing up yet?
I don't have any anecdotal information myself. I can certainly look into that in talking with our business assistant, who really has the most interaction with, with the customers. But in, so no, typically people are, are calling and we're able to work through any questions that they may have in terms of email addresses, in terms of what it means in terms of telephone lines and some different alternatives, or how they can stream different television type things. So I know that we've been able to work through those questions that, that people have, just in terms of what the, what is the process that they would need to go through to, to make this transition over to access.
Great. Okay. Yeah, I know that we do have, that the team has good materials and good answers for, for questions like that, like what, how do I transition my phone, or how do I still get live TV and those? We have, there is a ton of options on the internet for streaming of, of live TV or for hooking up like a IP phone service. So, yeah, glad the team has all that influence and actually has for quite some time. You know, let's, as, as we speak with the community about this project, let's see if we can come up with some anecdotal information as well. If, if we speak with someone who hasn't signed up, find out why.
That, that would be great because that'd be helpful outreach for us to be able to, to know how to address maybe some questions that we just haven't even heard directly yet.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mayor here.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Uh, Ms. Chu, I'm just, I'm, I'm glad you highlighted the five hundred potential customers that, that we've passed. That's a, that's a, obviously a great target since we've already invested in the infrastructure. So again, appreciate you highlighting that important target that those are the specific people we should be asking. Why haven't they, they signed up yet? And, and how can we help educate them about things like live TV and phone service, which I think is a, is a pretty strong barrier to a lot of folks. So again, appreciate you highlighting a, a, a target-rich environment there that you're gonna focus on.
Thank you.
Ms. Cleveland?
Oh, thank you. I think Ryan, Mr. Walters was trying to get in there first.
Sorry, Mr. Walters. Do you want to go?
Uh, doesn't matter to me.
Well, you're on now. Go first.
So from the perspective of the fiber committee, I think that, you know, we have dual goals here. One, we believe in the tech and we believe in the product, and we believe that, you know, this is important to Anacortes, its society as well as its economy. But our second goal is that it pay for itself and that it essentially repay the quasi-loan that we have given it from the general fund. And that's why we mentioned this concept of increasing the speed of installations, because if we install sooner, we get revenue sooner. So if you're gonna spend the money later, it's cheaper to spend the money now. And I think this is a good opportunity to hit council's temperature on that concept. Basically, what we're talking about is, in my view, employees, not contractors, because we didn't do very well at soliciting contractors in the past. Plus, what we're talking about is an installation where we are really controlling the customer service experience. So I think it's, it probably almost has to be employees that we're talking about. But limited-term employees, you know, this is a project, a, a one-time construction, and after the construction is over, we will be doing some maintenance, but we won't be having an ongoing forever construction project. So if the council is consistent in its vision of this project and supportive of hiring more limited-term employees to increase the pace of construction, I, I think it would be useful if council members would say that so that staff can plan for when it would become appropriate to do that, because it might not be right away. We have to get the backbone built in the various areas, but, but it might also be soon. So if, if that's the case, I, I would just as soon speed up the process. And, and also, we hear from constituents, right, who really like the concept, like the service, are rejoicing in other people who have fiber internet now, but are upset that it, it could be years before they get it. So this would, this would help alleviate that concern as, as well. So I, I encourage council members to speak up if they, if they think that that is a good approach. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention is that while thirty-five percent is the, the target take rate in our model, it is certainly not the ceiling. We should feel free to go beyond, you know, forty, forty-five, sixty percent, you know, whatever we can achieve there. I, I think it will benefit tons of people that are paying for internet now and paying a lot more than they could be if they had the city service.
Anecdotally, Mr. Lundberg and I spoke with another NISLE-owned fiber internet service in the, in the Midwest, and they began installations back in twenty nineteen, so they're about a, or twenty eighteen, about a year ahead of us. But they are pretty close to an over fifty percent take rate. So I think it's very possible.
And what did they do? Did they hire a lot of people upfront to get installations done? What was their model like?
They used contracted services to, to bring the first nineteen hundred customers in, into service, and then have paired back to just a couple of staff that are the installers now. So their, their staff of two are doing about ten installs a week that they use outside help to get the first nineteen hundred customers online.
Wow. Mr. Young?
Well, you know, if a word of support is what you need in order to move that forward, I am very much in supportive, supportive of it. Quite honestly, at my house, we can't wait for our opportunity to sign up. So I'm one of those customers waiting with bated breath. So, but seriously, whatever we need to do, I like the idea of building up and then paring back as is needed. I think you're absolutely right. We're only limited by our ability to install, particularly in those areas that we've already put in the equipment in order to make it happen. So I think that that would be a great use of resources going forward. So I'm very much in supportive of that.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
And it's. I'd encourage you to actually put your order in. We are tracking all those pre-orders.
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Chu, for your presentation. Could you go back to the first slide, please? It has the table with the month-by-month installations and income? Great. Thank you. So it looks like they're, obviously they're increasing quite a bit month-by-month. It looks like the increase from June to July wasn't quite as many as the increase from May to June. It looks like seventy-one from added in June and then thirty-five added between June and July. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes. So the, in the May and June, the, the backbone was completely done being installed. And we had done a lot of work when we were limited in our ability to enter homes, where we would do the outside work from the MST to the, to the outside of the, the home. And so during that timeframe, once we were able to then re-enter the, the homes and do the full installation, we had a backlog of, of many that were like half-done, and we just needed to do the inside installation. So we were able to work through that backlog to make that big push between a hundred and thirty-eight and two hundred and nine, between May and June. In the, between June and July, the, the easier installations have been completed through our pre-orders. We've been working on some underground installations as we work through the developing process for, for doing that. We've been doing some, some infilling and some businesses, but they've been a little bit more complicated. And so that has cut down the, the number of installations. We also did some work to, to get our facility site, up at the operations facility, ready so that when we have this next big round of construction for the next six aerial areas, that we have the, the yard prepared to be able to, to have all the materials on hand and work with the contractor in that space. We really didn't have that as well organized previously. So that will be important and helpful efficiencies moving forward.
Great. So thank you very much for that, and it's important to hear about that. I'm glad to know about that foundational work that you're doing up at the operations center too. Thank you.
Other thoughts do we have? Ms. Cleveland?
So I appreciate this update on the fiber network. From what I remember, the last time when we talked about increasing staff to do installs, our main concern was that we have the equipment on hand to actually do the installs, and then to also kind of have the system in place so that you can train those new staff members to get it done as efficiently as possible. So I would lend my support if we are now at that place where we've got equipment and sign-ups and training to do so moving forward efficiently. The other thing that I, I was thinking in the back of my head, and hopefully we can have, maybe also kind of a hacks committee discussion item, is as we expand the access internet that's a city entity, if there are some students who, because of COVID times, we're seeing the, the school district provide computers, if there are students at home that don't necessarily have access to the internet, I hope that we can be a partner with the school district to get that access to our various students. And also, you know, as, if the senior center continues to stay closed and the library, I think that this is a, this would be something to consider with the CARES Act if we need to, a funding to continue the internet access for our individuals, especially as we go into colder winter times where people can't get out as easily. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cleveland.
Mayor here.
Mayor here.
Uh, I think it was Mr. Miller, then Mr. McDougal.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Just back, back to the discussion about whether we bring on additional employees to get the installs done quicker. Certainly I support that as a temporary capital expense, a part of the fiber project. I just would be slightly cautious as we're looking at the numbers, which is what we should be doing as, as we're building this. If there's, you know, on average, six installs a week, is there really even a need to bring on additional folks? So I just, I just would caution jumping on the, the hiring folks when we, we may not be. I'm hoping we'll get a, a much higher rate of installs per week. Uh I'm hoping we'll get a, a much higher rate of installs per week based on the, the June and July numbers. But uh I'd just be cautious about immediately, immediately hiring uh additional folks if we don't have the, the customers ready to be hooked up.
Great, thank you. Mr. McDougal.
Thank you. Um I wanted to actually reiterate total support for what's uh from Ms. uh Cleveland's statements are. Um I think it would be fantastic if we can offer a, some sort of, well, a, a service for, for lower-income folks as well as a service for those who have been impacted by COVID, uh with the potential to, to reimburse ourselves with some of that CARES Act money for the, the discounted service for those impacted by COVID. Um I think that would be, also be a way to drive additional take rates um, particularly in the east side of town as well. Um and secondly, a question for, from Ms. Yu, if I can remember what my question was. Uh actually, no, a question probably from Mr. Lindberg. If we were to, say, look for these temporary employees from, say, the, you know, essentially kind of the general construction sector, because I think kind of a majority of the work is more construction-oriented, can our, could our in-house staff uh train those new employees up on, say, the, the fiber, the fiber-specific uh tasks involved in doing an installation?
Yes, I believe uh that our existing staff are capable of doing that. And um in all likelihood, if, if additional installer resource were brought online, um we would absolutely not uh throw them out on their own, so to speak, but would rather uh require that they be trained by our existing staff. And uh Emily and I were discussing that just a little bit earlier today, as a matter of fact, uh to, to, reflecting exactly that sentiment.
That's great. That, that means the, a more generalized, we could look to a, a more generalized skill set to try to hire from and then give them the specifics needed. So that's great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments for Ms. Yu this evening? Ms. Molton?
Thank you.
Ms. Molton and Ms. Walters.
Thanks.
All right, Caroline.
I, I concur with Ms. Cleveland McGrath and Mr. McDougal uh to the importance of helping potential low-income or households get internet service through the city with CARES Act help, especially students and seniors and really anyone at needs. I just want to express support for that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Walters.
Mayor Geer, um based on that chart that showed uh revenue growth, if we um, you know, just quickly plot that out and plot a best, best fit line to it, we, we would be making quite a bit of money at year, at month twelve of installations. You know, something on the order of half a million dollars a year that is really going to help uh pay for the ongoing operations. And if we can get there faster than, you know, an additional six months, that, that would, that would be great. Uh I feel the need to temper my enthusiasm a little bit because, as Steve will always remind us, we have to worry about cash flow, we have to worry about the loans that we might need to take out to make this happen. We have to correctly characterize these as construction costs. As Mr. Miller will remind us, these are limited-term employees, you know, all of those caveats. Um but I don't think there should be an artificial constraint of how many employees we have said are allowed. I think it should be driven uh by those numbers. And, and I would be interested in seeing that delta between the demand for installations and the number of installations we're actually able to perform. Um otherwise, though, let, let, let's go get out.
Okay, thank you. Well, good conversation. Thank you, Ms. Yu, thank you, Mr. Lindberg, thank you, council. Um we'll pick this up tomorrow morning, won't we, Emily?
We will, eight o'clock, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on now to item five C, which is resolution twenty-eighty-two and twenty-eighty-five, ratifying the proclamation of emergency and providing temporary um procedures to respond to the COVID-nineteen epidemic. Mr. Holton.
Uh thank you, Mayor. So um back on March sixteenth, it's hard to believe we've been at this for four months now. But on March sixteenth, resolution twenty-eighty-two was adopted, which um, which uh ratified proclamation of emergency and provided for temporary procedures responding to the COVID-nineteen crisis. Um that was March sixteenth. On April twenty-seventh, resolution twenty-eighty-five was uh, was adopted and that extended those, extended that proclamation and those temporary um procedures through July thirty-first. So what we are asking for tonight is some direction uh on how to proceed with um resolution twenty-eighty-five coming to conclusion on July thirty-first. Uh if those temporary procedures are not extended, we would um revert back to council procedures um which uh allows for, I believe at this point, allows for one council member to um, to call into the, the council meeting. The, I believe the proclamation that the governor released that required decentralized meetings runs through August first. Um and it seems possible that, that that may be extended as well. Um but at this point, we've got another council meeting left in the month. If council wanted to uh have staff take action and um put a resolution together to potentially extend those temporary uh procedures uh one more time. So that's um where we're at and what we are looking for this evening.
Mayor Geer.
Mr. Walters.
Uh I tend to think that we should just extend uh the prior resolution through the end of the year. Nice round number, pick it up again in December or earlier if this goes away. Um however, uh one, one other thing that um we've been talking about a little bit is whether we can or should have council committee meetings um in person if they are held outside. And uh especially given the failure of our street closure efforts, I wonder if the local health department would like to weigh in on that. Um seems to me that that is relatively safe, but it seems also prohibited by our current resolution. Um but not with the governor's proclamation, because the governor's proclamation affects agencies and uh council committees are not themselves agencies. Mayor Geer.
Mr. Miller.
So uh I, I tend to agree that uh, that we need to extend it, or we do need to extend it. I'd like to not be pessimistic and take it to the end of the year. I'd like to pick a, pick a date somewhere in between, maybe, maybe even uh end of August and revisit again. Um this is, we should have to revisit it quite a bit. This is a, a major impact to our citizens. So revisiting it uh shouldn't take a whole lot of uh skin off our back. We have to revisit this every month uh to see where we are. Uh but Mr. Walters brings up another important point, substantive changes. And I'm, I, that sounds like the only, I, I was trying to think of substantive changes to the resolution besides the uh, the length of time, a committee meeting could, could be one that, that I'm indifferent on.
Ms. Molton.
Thank you. Uh I also like the idea of extending it um with Mr. Miller as far as maybe not doing it till the end of the year, end of August perhaps, if it's not too onerous to revisit it, then end of September maybe. Well, either of those would work for me. I would be in favor of having outdoor committee meetings in person with safe physical distancing and masking and all the hygienic precautions we would need to take. I feel that sometimes in person, it's, it's just helpful to be with each other socially and the same reason that we have council meetings in person when we can. I think that that's worth exploring. I would really like to have that option. And the one thing about the item summary, I highlighted the third bullet point. It says the public comment portion of council meetings and any scheduled public hearings are temporarily suspended to discourage public in-person attendance of city council meetings. I wonder if that could be amended to state that the public portion of council meetings will be held online, like we did today with Ms. Christiansen. That was a really nice um option to have, that someone could comment live. So if we could maybe tweak that language and also encourage live participation, I think that would be great.
Ms. Cleveland.
So my, I, I would like, I would enjoy having in-person meetings and actually getting to engage with staff and other council members. My only concern that I think we would want to hash out is the fact that if we're having out, typically when we have meeting, committee meetings, they are held at city hall. And if members of the public want to attend, they do attend from time to time. So my concern is when we start to have outdoor meetings, where are they held? And then how do we allow a consistency of having um the members of the public attend or not? Um so I think that that should probably be hashed out along with, you know, if we decide to have in-person meetings. And I don't have a good answer for that right off the bat.
Mayor Geer.
Ms. Molton and then Mr. Yang.
I wonder if we could do them at a city-owned property. And they would be weather-dependent, which would freak me if we had to cancel. But like at the heart of Anna Cortis, maybe there's Wi-Fi there or, that one comes to mind because I believe it's covered in stage. Uh anyway, that's just one idea. But I would love to explore it further without, without, with those questions in mind.
Okay.
Mayor Geer.
Mr. Yang and then Mr. Walters.
Um I am in, so much in agreement about us and the consideration of meeting in public. I ordinarily, it's such a wonderful part of this, but honestly, I miss the public interaction, I do. My caution is right now, because of the trending we have with COVID, it makes it increasingly difficult for us to be able to do that safely. I do believe if we can think of a way to do it, it would be great. But quite honestly, I would feel better about taking this approach if we were trending the other way a little bit more. And then we've sort of reached the result as a group of people that we will honor the masking part of it as a public if we're providing an opportunity for public to come forward and be able to join us and have their say. So that is a lot of logistics that I think need to be worked out. But I do think if we get trending the other way, I would be all for considering that, Ms. Molton. I, I truly think it's what we do need, but we're trending the wrong way right now. So I'm, I'm of the opinion we should take a holding pattern and um, and also um, you know, just sort of do the work that we need to do under, uh the way we're doing it right now. That's, I would be cautious.
So Mr. Yang and Mr. Carter, I'd like to comment on that. Maybe with revisiting it at the end of August, maybe at that time, we could do the uh more public um committee meetings. Hopefully we'd be, we'd be trending better at that point. Mr. Carter, what, what's your comment?
I, I like the idea of being outside, but think about the logistics behind it. I mean recreating basically the council chambers. And if we're going to have masks on, we're going to need speakers and wiring. Everyone has to have their own microphone. And just the amount of manpower set up and takedown after every meeting just doesn't seem feasible to me.
Mayor Geer.
Mr. Walters.
Well, we, we are prohibited under the governor's order from having an in-person meeting of the city council. I don't think we can do that. Um but we could have a committee meeting in person outdoors. Um I, I, I think that this requires a little more study to analyze the impact, maybe get public health to weigh in. Um and if we don't have time to figure that out right away, I would still support reauthorization of the resolution. Uh I don't see the need to do it every month, maybe every quarter, um like run it to the, end of September um and then revisit. But in the meantime, we could figure out how to do in-person committee meetings if we figure it out. By the end of September, we probably won't be wanting to do a lot of outside meetings. So um, you know, maybe if we're going to do that, we need to figure it out quickly. But in the meantime, we could get the resolution reauthorized. Mayor Geer. Mayor Geer.
Then Ms. Molton, then Mr. Miller. All the green lights are on at the same time.
I've noticed, at least in the, in the remote committee meetings, we're using uh WebEx as the conferencing technology. And WebEx does have the ability to allow um folks, participants to, to dial in and then the, the meeting owner can mute those people and, you know, and then unmute them when the time comes. So that's, that's an option for public participation in committee meetings. And I also would encourage us to look into that uh technology for city council meetings as well while we're still online, to be able to allow direct participation where the, the meeting owner has them all muted until, you know, they raise their hand to speak, so to speak. Um full disclosure, the uh, I work, my employer is, owns the, the product, WebEx. So um if a decision like that is made, I won't be voting in, in any kind of decision like that.
Okay. This morning um we discussed that and IT and Marsha are looking into what our options will be. So I think Ms. Molton was next, then Mr. Miller, is that right? Go ahead, Ms. Molton.
Thank you. That was going to be my question because so far the committee meetings I've been to, we haven't had any public participation. So I didn't know if it's different if we have them in person versus when we have them remotely. But either way, however we move forward, I would like to see the opportunity for participation. And if we had committee meetings in person and we didn't necessarily have the public there, that they, that they could participate remotely and still be there virtually.
Okay, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I'm okay with the end of September date.
Meanwhile.
And obviously always to change it beforehand if the things trend and are more positive. Yeah, and, and then uh on the, on the substantive part, um the committee, the committee meeting, the same thing. We can look at that down the road. But I would like to try to figure out a way to, sorry, apologize which council member mentioned it, but the, the public comment piece, if we can figure out a better way to allow for the public to be able to comment uh in this, in this forum, I think that would, that would be appropriate. We're, we're supposed to be able to hear from members of the public.
Right, and we're working on that.
Figure out a way to do that.
I'll come to you next week and hopefully have plans for that.
Sounds great, thank you.
Right. So any other discussion on this? Mr. Walters.
I, I, I thought it might be worthwhile to point out just that when we get to phase three, which doesn't look likely anytime soon, but when that happens, I think we are allowed to go to in-person meetings again for the council. Um but the new limit is that we can't have gatherings of more than ten people. So, you know, that, it's still going to be complicated. Um so yeah, I, I would suggest to Mr. Holton that he bring the resolution uh back to us next week for extension uh through September and that we continue working on a, a plan for in-person, outdoor, masked meetings. And then add that on later when we get it figured out.
Perfect. Does that sound good to everybody? All right, good discussion. We'll, we'll air, um take care of that next week.
Excuse me, Mayor Geer. Excuse me, this is, this is Marsha. Council members, did you determine if you'd like us to strike the bullet that prohibits public comment and public hearings? We could just take that out of the resolution? So that, technology permitting, that would then be allowed?
Yes, I think that's what they mean.
We see nods on that one.
Reformulate it.
We would simply strike that bullet in the, in the resolution that extends. That would be the only substantive change.
Okay, that would be perfect, and we'll take it up next week. Thank you. Ms. Walters, anything else? All right. So at this time, we're going to move on to item five D, authorizing resolution twenty-ninety-five. This is a Thompson Trail trust, trustful planning grant. Mr. Linsford.
Thank you, Mayor Geer. So um in order to apply for this grant, um we need to have a resolution from city council to begin the application process. So a little background, the grant is an applicant. So a little background, the grant is an application to the Recreation Conservation Office. That's the RCO, it's our State Recreation and Conservation Granting Agency, as the name implies. And so this project is a cooperative project with the Department of Natural Resources and the Samish Nation to do a feasibility study and about thirty-five percent construction drawings, which would make them permit-eligible for looking at removing, um, actually replacing the existing causeway and trestle with a new, um, bridge-type structure that it would be free of creosote, um, and would allow for the, uh, historical passage of water that was blocked by the causeway when that was constructed, uh, a hundred or so years ago to replenish the health of Sedago Bay and the estuary there in the hopes that that would help to benefit local salmon, um, populations and orca populations by increasing the, uh, places where juvenile salmon could hide and the breeding of feeding fish, feeder fish, rather. So the plan, as you can see in the notes, uh, in the provided, is to, um, apply for, uh, the total project for about three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. And we're asking the RCO for about two-hundred-and-five thousand. And then we're asking, um, uh, other agencies for the match, so thirty percent match. And right now, we are reaching out to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for their state assistant, uh, planning grants, proj- uh, projects to help us meet that match. And so we are having kind of, uh, conversations with them about being partners with that. Those have been very popular, are very positive conversations, but it's still an ongoing, um, discussion as well. So I guess the way that I would encourage you to look at this would be that we can't go forward with this grant, even if we awarded it without the matching funds. We just don't have the resources. We don't have the budget to do that at this time. We're optimistic that we can find the grants to do that and move forward. But until we receive the matching grant, the thirty percent required on this, if we're successful in this application, we wouldn't go forward. And so we all understand that as partners with the Samish Nation and the DNR, uh, Department of Natural Resources, that's why we're working cooperatively to identify additional sources if, uh, our potential match doesn't work. So I'm happy to go through more about this if you have questions. So I'll stop right now and just see if anyone would like to ask me anything.
Please, please.
Okay, well, I like that.
Wait a minute, Mr. Walters. Go ahead.
Uh, I don't have a question. I just wanted to point out that state DNR has been super enthusiastic and confident they can put money together for this. And, uh, I think that makes it a really good deal for us if, if that's the case. I, I definitely don't support spending general fund dollars at this time on something like this. So I'm, I'm glad that's not part of the equation. I also really rather like the idea of authorizing resolutions for grant applications. I understand that this one is driven by the agency, but, um, you know, we could require them ourselves. You know, before, before we end up, you know, buying a boat, we didn't anticipate or something like that. Uh, so, um, I, I like this whole approach and the project overall, of course.
Okay. So, other comments? Well, we are looking for an authorization.
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Young?
I recommend that we pass the authorizing resolution as submitted.
Thank you.
Second.
And we have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Walters to authorize Resolution twenty-ninety-five for the Thompson Trail Trestle Planning Grant. Any other discussion? Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Ms. Maltin?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller? I'm sorry, Mr. Miller. I didn't hear your response.
Yes. Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So great meeting. At this time, the meeting is adjourned. Enjoy your evening. Good night.